Session for the Board of County Commissioners 2024. We are going to be talking about our Climate Action Plan, and we have some staff members who've been working on this quite a bit. Sarah, do you want any kind of a kickoff? Or I should probably say, within work sessions, we don't take public comment during this time. It's just a discussion amongst the commission and staff. But anyone who'd like to stay for our 5:30 business meeting, we take general public comment at that time. And then this will also be on our regular agenda, so we can speak to it on our regular agenda. With that, I will have Kim Kreiner Ritchie maybe kick us off. Thanks for being here.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Kim Kreiner Ritchie, Sustainability Manager. And here with me is Jamie Hoffling, Sustainability Impact Analyst. And we're very excited to be able to talk with you about this final draft of Adapt Douglas County. And I'm going to just turn it over to Jamie and let her kick us off. I'm not sure why it's saying hide self view. Oh, there we go. Okay, it looks like that's gone. Okay, great. Okay. So yeah, thank you so much for the opportunity to present on this version, the final version of Adapt Douglas County, our Climate Action Adaptation Plan. The first public draft was presented to you all during the November work session 2023. And for today's session, since some time has passed, we'll reiterate some of the background information and also share some of the updates since the last iteration. And then we'll dive into the goal areas and wrap up with plans for collaboration and implementation. All right. So on this slide, you'll see some of the steps that directed our office towards the development of this plan. Plan 2040, Chapter 2, Action 6.1, called for an adoption of a climate change adaptation and mitigation plan that incorporated potential climate change scenarios and identified actions that could reduce greenhouse gases, risks, and hazards, exposure to them. Then in 2021, the Kansas City Regional Climate Action Plan was developed and provided voluntary framework to guide and align local action in ways that make a difference for the Kansas City region, which we're part of. It included Douglas County in its development, and we looked to it for regional support and collaboration in writing this particular plan. There's a local support letter from the Mid-America Regional Council, which is the organization who led the development of the regional plan. And we're also in continuous conversations with them on how this plan fits in with the entire region. Then in 2022, the Lawrence and county offices formed separate sustainability offices, and we came to lead the Douglas County Climate Action Plan, which broadened the scope of this plan beyond Plan 2040, making it even more inclusive of the entire county. Okay, so what are we trying to address with this Climate Action Adaptation Plan? There is scientific consensus that climate change is occurring, and climate change correlates with compounding stressors that can and are impacting our community. Rising average temperatures produce a more variable climate system, which can result in an increase in frequency and severity of extreme weather events, including longer and hotter heat waves, increased risk of wildfires, higher wind speeds, and greater rainfall intensity. The chart that you see here on this slide compares monthly global temperatures over time, starting with pre-industrial levels. Climate science uses industrial revolution as a benchmark period to compare relationship trends between emissions and temperature, because this is the period where human activity began unlocking the carbon sources that are at an accelerated rate. The lighter colored lines on the chart show monthly temperatures, starting with 1940, and the darker orange line that's up at the top there is 2023. So the last year, temperature worldwide were 1.48 degrees Celsius, or 2.66 degrees Fahrenheit higher than they were in the second half of the 19th century. And scientists at NASA similarly found that global average temperatures in '23 to be about 1.37 degrees Celsius higher than pre-industrial levels. And NOAA, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, reported last year was 1.34 degrees Celsius warmer than the pre-industrial average. So while each of these organizations uses different methods to calculate their numbers, they all agree that 2023, last year, was the warmest year on record by a wide margin. So now to bring us here more locally in Kansas, what are we seeing here? Data from NOAA's 2022 State Climate Summary indicates the following for Kansas: That temperatures have risen 1.5 degrees Fahrenheit since the start of the 20th century, with the greatest warming occurring in the winter and the spring, and under a higher emission scenario, where we're emitting more emissions historically. We should be seeing historically unprecedented warming, which is projected during this century. Extreme precipitation events show a general increase and are more pronounced in the eastern part of Kansas. Between 2015 and 2020, the number of two-inch precipitation events was well above the average. The intensity of future droughts is also projected to increase, and combined with extreme summer heat, it's expected to have significant negative impacts on our agriculture. Frequency and severity of wildfires are also projected to increase. And these points are also stated in the forthcoming Region K Hazard Mitigation Plan. And that's the hazard mitigation plan that Douglas County is part of. And this plan, the Adapt Douglas County Plan, seeks to participate in countering the higher emissions scenario that you see here. Okay. So our planning team, what did we do? We set out to couple what the science is saying about climate change with the ways in which our community is experiencing it. We also sought to learn what the community finds to be the biggest threats and concerns for the future. Backed by community listening, peer learning, and data, the ultimate goal was to make policy and program recommendations that both reduce our contribution to climate change and help our community adapt in ways that builds our collective resilience. And resilience for the purpose of this plan means the ability to prepare for threats, hazards, adapt to changing conditions, and recover rapidly from disruptions. Okay. So you guys have seen a slide similar to this before, so I'm not going to go through every part of what went into the plan or what informed the plan, but there are some parts of it that I really want to pull out. One of the approaches taken in order to capture authentic community concerns related to climate change were the peer-to-peer reviews, which we typically refer to as the community coordinators. These were genuine conversations that could elevate the real, everyday concerns that people are having, because they're held between peers. And they helped us reach more of the population at a deeper level than we would see with just a survey alone. This is the second time that our offices use this approach. And the first time was during the development of the Food System Plan. The full narratives can be found on our website if anyone wants to take a deeper look at them. They're also in the appendix of the plan. And then the peer-to-peer reviews or interviews helped inform the next phase of our outreach, which were the focus groups. For example, they elevated concerns about climate grief, extreme temperatures, and economical impacts from these hazards, which helped us structure a focus group for community members who work in or have received human services to learn about how climate change was impacting services and quality life from that lens. I also want to mention our steering committee, who has been extremely instrumental in helping us develop this plan. And I'm sure you received lots of support letters from them. And yeah, they've been wonderful, and our staff advisory as well. Very big part of informing the plan. And I'm going to pass it over to Kim.
Equity and climate resilience means that one's race, class, ability, or other characteristics are not a determinant of how well one is equipped to deal with climate change. So one component of the plan that was in development when we last brought it to you was this equity framework. This is a framework for approaching implementation and development of actions as we progress with this plan. We worked with a local diversity, equity, and inclusion professional to help develop this framework that you see here and that's found in the plan. First layer of this inquiry, or the first row here on the slide, these are exploratory questions that should be applied to strategies as we approach implementing them, so that we can help avoid exacerbating existing inequities, whether these efforts are policy change, a public program, or infrastructure. And the second layer of the questions here are, they provide a universal and inclusive recommendations that are not specific to any goal area of the plan. It should be considered in the design of actions, considering how they will be presented to or accessed by members of the public. And they should follow the investigation of the initial questions that we should ask ourselves as we approach these, of who will be impacted and what our role is in preventing harm. Each section of the plan includes additional example recommendations more specific to those goal areas to inspire further inquiry and creative equity considerations. But they are not intended to be exhaustive of all the equity reflections that are possible through this plan, but to keep the reminder there as people can continue to think about their priorities. Next slide, please. Another component that has been further clarified since our last presentation is our greenhouse gas reduction pathway. So to review, and as Jamie illustrated a moment ago, greenhouse gases already released into our atmosphere will continue a warming trend that will increase our risk of extreme events and everyday stress. The International Panel on Climate Change, or the IPCC, in their sixth assessment warns that, "In order to keep warming below 1.5 degrees Celsius, global emissions should drop 50% by 2030 and reach net zero by 2050." But since not all nations contribute to the same amount of emissions based on their population and activities, the reduction responsibility toward this goal is not the same around the world. So using our unique greenhouse gas inventory from 2021 and access to a leading greenhouse gas software, we were able to calculate that our local responsibility toward this global goal, if we were to be on track with it relative to our contribution, our responsibility would be to drop emissions by 60.4% from what it was in 2021 by the year 2030. Next. So recognizing that we are not on track for this shorter-term milestone of 2030, based on local action alone, the planning team used the same science-based software, called ClearPath, and advice from ICCL, Local Governments for Sustainability, which is a leading organization in local government sustainability efforts and greenhouse gas strategies, to outline alternate scenarios using actions outlined in our plan. So for this scenario illustrated here, we input 2024 as our starting year, because we did this model last year, and measured the impacts over the course of six years toward 2030. We measured local actions, and again, in incremental estimates that were advised by ICCL in their best practice. For example, retrofitting 5% of buildings per year to be 20% more efficient. And if we were able to accomplish all of these measures by the starting date in these exact conditions, we could see a reduction of 38.5% in our emissions by 2030. And we offer this scenario, which we are obviously not on track for, given the time parameters, not as a concrete target, but as a tangible example of the modeling that we'll be able to do once we implement measurable actions such as these and are able to calculate based on real-time data and progress. Next slide, please. The plan continues to use this scenario as an illustration throughout the mitigating actions of this plan to remind us of the measurable progress that we will be able to assess, update, and adjust as we progress into implementation of this plan. They also put us on a path toward the long-term goal of carbon neutrality or net-zero emissions by 2050, which is the next milestone identified by IPCC. We anticipate that once implementation is launched and data is collected, we will be able to model additional scenarios and set realistic interim goals to remain accountable and on track toward 2050.
So now we're going to get into the different goal areas. And some of these you've seen before, or actually, all of them you have. But we'll go through them and go through the updates and also share some of the progress that we've been making in these areas already. So Adapt Douglas County has 14 high-level goals with 32 corresponding strategies that are organized into these four different systems: Energy, Mobility, Living Systems, and Thriving Community. They each include policy and program recommendations that are flexible and not overly prescriptive, so they can be applied to the different cities and the unincorporated areas that make up Douglas County and can be implemented in ways that are most relevant and accessible to the respective community. As we go through them, you're going to see a list of co-benefits and equity considerations that have been added to each of the goal areas. So the first one is energy, and it accounts for energy use in residential and commercial buildings across the community, which make up more than half of our total emissions, a significant portion of which come from our electric grid. As I mentioned earlier, one of the weather hazards we're seeing more of is extreme temperatures, which increases our energy demand. The first goal addresses the need to counter increasing demand by reducing overall energy consumption in our buildings while also making renewable sources more accessible. Our staff has had some early conversations with housing and utility assistance partners about the potential for co-creating energy reduction and renewable access programs that maximize benefits. We've also started looking for opportunities in county buildings for renewable energy. Between increasing weather hazards and elevated daily usage during extreme temperatures, we can anticipate more disruption and strain on the electric grid. With Goal 2, we acknowledge the necessity of building more resilience in our energy supply by working collaboratively at the state and regional levels. We want to explore opportunities for the county to engage and be part of a conversation with our local utilities and support state-level policy that increases access and options for local renewable options at both the home and community level. The focus here is on clean, affordable, and reliable energy.
The mobility system accounts for how we move around the community, including modes of transportation and infrastructure. Our greenhouse gas inventory indicates that vehicle miles traveled is the second-largest contributor of emissions in the county. So for this goal section, we realized there's a lot of great work in leadership and recent planning that has happened in our community. So we had a lot of support in developing these strategies and kind of taking our climate considerations in transportation to new opportunities. In addition to continuing to increase multimodal options, access, and connectivity, in this section, there are also strategies to assess demand in corridors for travel for inner-city commuter options and to strategically plan for electrical vehicle infrastructure so that any future installations are laid out with demand, future growth, capacity, and equity in mind. And one of our initial actions, we do have an established partnership with NPO to have them lead an EV readiness study for the entire county so that we can have those plans in hand when opportunities come along for infrastructure. These mobility goals also take into consideration that transitioning to low-carbon modes of transportation is not the only way to reduce emissions from vehicle miles traveled and are not limited to cyclist walkers or people with electric vehicles. They also include strategies that reduce overall travel times. For example, using... ITS stands for Intelligent Transportation Systems, sorry. Intelligent Transportation System Technology that can improve travel by car, because we know that cars are part of our community and we will need to focus some strategies on them as well. Forgive me. So the four goals grouped under Living Systems acknowledge the significance of landscapes and ecosystems, particularly those that protect our community in extreme weather and contribute to emissions reduction through carbon sequestration. Strategies that protect, build capacity, and even work to restore natural functions can contribute to our climate resilience. Strategies such as reviewing development codes for opportunities to reduce runoff and erosion and further protect floodplain, and promoting programs that encourage land management that will maximize carbon sequestration. This section also calls out the Douglas County Open Space Plan as an opportunity to further develop and implement overlapping goals in land conservation. And at this time, we are already making progress in understanding hydrology and flood risk in the Waukerosa River corridor and in Washington Creek through an opportunity with the Corps. This plan acknowledges grid decarbonization as a leading strategy for reducing emissions. Both the Energy Section and the Living Systems Section acknowledge the importance of maintaining strong and intentional regulations for wind and solar and point directly to those processes as a key in making those decisions.
Okay, and the last system is Thriving Community. There are five goals under this section that focus on the quality of life amid a changing climate and are about being prepared for the climate hazards. The strategies in this section involve working closely with our partners in public health and emergency management. And through these partnerships, our office will continue working on assessing local impacts and indicators of climate change on our physical health and mental health so that local services can adapt and respond. We're also in early conversations about assessing waste diversion opportunities throughout the county and hope to be a champion in reducing our emissions through waste management. So as you can see, climate change impacts so many areas of our life, and there's a lot that goes into each one of these systems.
So, excuse me. In somewhat of a summary, this plan proposes that, if adopted, once we launch implementation, that we will continually model and adapt our strategies, identify realistic performance indicators, reassess our strategies at intervals, and set interim targets as we're able to adjust to real-time impact, and all with the end target of carbon neutrality by 2050. Within the implementation section of this plan, the draft outlines the recommended role and commitments of Douglas County in implementation. And these include facilitating or convening other leaders in actions that are county-wide in scale, updating our countywide greenhouse gas inventory every two to three years, convening a plan and progress review every five years to assess strategies, new opportunities, and interim targets, serve as a resource for other communities and organizations working on their own priorities and efforts that contribute to these goals, and convening data and reporting into a public placing platform so that we maintain accountability to the community in this effort. Within this final section, you'll also find a table of identified initial actions, because while we have been drafting, the planning team and partners have also been taking the opportunity to explore opportunities, not to say opportunity twice, but explore opportunities to align initiatives or substantial strategies so that these things were not passing us by. And that list that you'll see there at the end, they're not exhaustive of all of our partners' initial priorities, and they do not limit us from pursuing or discovering new opportunities in the short term, but rather, an example collection of progress that we've already been making as a team. So before we conclude, just a couple closing remarks. I want to thank all of the community members and staff partners, community partners, who helped contribute to this collective planning process from the committees that Jamie mentioned, the coordinators that did interviews, those who attended our focus groups, who answered surveys and gave public comment. And... I can't read my handwriting. Sorry. Important to point out for you Commissioners that this plan does not request any additional budgetary decisions. It does not ask for anything beyond the sustainability staff capacity. If anything, it gives us a roadmap for seeking external resources and funding or to pool resources in ways toward this foundation of the direction that we decide as a community we want to go or the goals that we've established across our five governments as aligning with our priorities. And in addition to remaining accountable to the public, we also want to be sure to keep you informed and confident in our direction and progress. So in this conversation, we hope you'll share with us how best we can do that and keep you updated, of course, should you decide that this is an appropriate plan for our community. And now we look forward to your questions. Thank you. Commissioner, would you want to start?
Sure, I've got a couple. Nice report, both of you appreciate it and all the work that was taken in on that. Do you think we need an update to our slides in our packet? You added just two or three there. And so if you could update that. Looked to me, and based on the input that we've... the earlier conversations that we've had, that this was a very robust public process, especially things like the 10 community coordinators that were out there interviewing people. And so I was surprised when I got some public feedback saying that maybe this was only something that was generated out of the city of Lawrence, and it didn't include the unincorporated areas. I want to give you a chance to respond to that. I know in the listing of all the people that were involved, we didn't ask from their home addresses or we didn't create a map of everybody who got involved. But as the two who really worked in developing this plan, I'd love to hear your thoughts on, you know, how we involved both unincorporated and incorporated people in the discussion.
So you mentioned the community coordinators, and I will say that those 10 community coordinators were here in Lawrence, and those interviews were conducted in Lawrence. And by and large, the demographics, I'd say, we captured through that process was Lawrence. However, when we collected that data and looked at the results of it, we recognized that there were gaps. And at the same time, that was also when our offices, the city of Lawrence and Douglas County offices, were dividing up and becoming their own offices. And so that was when the scope broadened. So all of that was happening at the same time. And because of that, those two things, we sought to get more voices from the unincorporated areas through those focus groups. And so when we held our very first one, the first responders, we did get pulled in first responders from outside of Lawrence. So I would say there's pretty balanced voices in the room for that first one. And we continued to see that throughout the focus groups. In fact, I was often impressed by how often we did bring in people from outside of Lawrence. And it was wonderful, because that's exactly what we wanted to do. And I would say we did quite a lot to try to reach people in the other areas, short of sending out mailers, which I know that's an approach that county officials do use. We didn't do that for this one. But we did hold a focus group in Baldwin City, in Udora, and La Compton. And then when we did our focus group for agricultural producers, many of them were also from outside of Lawrence. So I hope that answers the question. If not, I'd be happy to elaborate more.
Also, with the plan draft, we did hold five open houses throughout the county, going to each of the other cities and then having one specifically for youth in addition to having one in Lawrence. So again, we tried to... what we attempted to take the draft back out to the public, in public at large.
We also did collect email addresses at each of those focus groups and all the open houses. And anyone who provided their email address to us was added to our email distribution list and was given updates throughout the process.
I was able to participate in one of the focus groups that was in Baldwin City, and actually, most of the people in the room, I think, were from the unincorporated area. So certainly, there was a draw to those meetings in other communities. This may sound like a criticism, but it's meant to be a praise. Early on, before, maybe when those offices were still splitting, I'm not sure if this was still a joint office, but an early survey, an online survey. And when I received it as a rural person, my response back, and I was not on the commission at that time, or just as a private citizen, I said, you know, as a rural person, my top three priorities, you know, aren't listed. So they recast everything in response to that. And so I do think that it's been a very broad process, incredibly broad process, in terms of listening. You will never get everyone, and that's always the criticism of like, well, I didn't know. But as far as stakeholder groups, it was incredibly broad. It was a great work to hear from voices. It was a great work to hear from voices, and not all of us across the community use the same words when we talk about our concerns around climate. And I think that this group is really sensitive to that also, intentionally sensitive to that. On that same line, talk to me about the engagement from the other cities, or from all of the cities, and what the timeline looks like if they're planning to look at this, adopt it, what their involvement might be.
So for citizen involvement, I think those focus groups, you know, those who signed up for the newsletter follow the process. The involvement from communities of those different cities looked a lot like, you know, anyone else who joined into the process. As far as our relationships with the leadership and their staff that joined our advisory, I should let Jamie speak to this as well because she had a big hand in this, but I think we saw our lines of communication open up in ways that we weren't having previously in sharing interest in sustainability. As you said, maybe using different language, what are their priorities about green space or transportation or things? And so sort of sharing that and seeing where the common vision was, and really creating that dialogue and relationship that translated into the plan, and that some of them has shared with us is now translating into plans that they're making, or other efforts that they're making, or using things that we've called on here to apply to things that they're doing there, so that we're finding that synergy. So we're really pleased with that. We will be taking this document to present to each of the bodies pending the direction you give us for it, as far as the county goes. And each of them will be invited to adopt it, and we will support them in, again, coming together on these goals in whatever way that looks appropriate for them.
And I'm just curious if another community looks at the plan and doesn't approve it, right? Will it come back? Will we make adjustments and it will come back here? Or we will just leave that city out? What's the process?
So the way we've, are you going to say something, Sarah?
Well, I can, if you want. I mean, I guess I would say the county's adopted it.
Right.
This is for the county as a whole. Our really vision is that individual cities are going to make this their own, or if they want to do something different, they can.
Okay.
So I think it's a big umbrella, and everybody can find their spot under the umbrella.
I think that sums it up really well. Yeah, we want to work together. I mean, whether their leadership decides that it's the right time to sign on to this or not, there is common ground and agreed vision here that we can continue to work together on, even if that looks a little bit different than having their name on a cover page.
And I think it would be good to underline, I think, something you said earlier there, that this isn't actual policy that is in place. It's a plan that may share a direction, you know, or give direction, but there's no budgetary commitment. There's nothing here that becomes code or anything like that. So I think I've heard, I've talked to some people in the community who seem to think that this is setting policy, and that's not what it does, to my understanding. Kim, do you have a different understanding?
No, I think that's spot on. And in fact, I want to add, the strategies here are intentionally written to be creative and applicable because the way that maybe a code change or an application looks in one city might look different, another city might look different in the unincorporated area, and we want to allow that space that no one feels like this can't apply to me because you've already overly prescribed it and that's not going to work for us. So we hope we've left that room that they can find themselves in there if that is a priority for their community. Or rather, if the action steps are.
I appreciate one of the things you were talking about in terms of the mobility discussion, because I certainly have heard from people in the community saying, you know, at least, and it was really kind of more of a reflection of conversations that happen in the city of Lawrence as opposed to Douglas County or at this body about bike ped being kind biking and walking in trails and such being kind of the main goal. But I think it is important to recognize that, you know, vehicle travel is a big part of our culture and will be for a very long time, including individual vehicles. So reducing vehicle miles traveled, whether that's having resources closer to where people live, whether that's, you know, places of employment, or grocery stores, or things like that, but also reducing vehicle time, that efficiencies really matter in that space too. So I think, you know, there's some concerns that if, that the more, you know, bike lanes that go in, the less efficient the motor vehicle travel will be. And I don't think that's the intention of this conversation. I think it's kind of a both and, that we're looking for balance, we're looking for something that moves all people more efficiently from point A to point B in the way that they need to. And certainly, there's equity considerations in terms of health and ability in mobility. And so I'm glad to hear that conversation also playing out, too.
So you gave us a nice overview of the 14 different goal areas. I'd love to hear a little bit about, and you talked about some of the progress that we're already making on some of those goal areas. I'd love to hear sort of both sides. What are some things that you think are really low-hanging fruit? Like, that's one you think we could really get to right away? And what are those you think are pretty challenging? You know, maybe a little bit more, you know, as you think like, how are we going to get to that? Just both sides of that. Do you have a couple you'd be willing to share?
Well, the ones that come to mind for me, that I hate to, I almost hate to call them low-hanging fruit because they don't feel easy to me either. None of this feels incredibly easy.
Fair enough, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, to just be really honest about that.
It's all about perspective, right? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But we do want to commit ourselves pretty early on with assessing more closely what the health impacts are on our community. That was something that, when the regional plan was done, there was a vulnerability and risk assessment that was done on the community that would give a little bit more, or a lot more perspective on that. And even though we're part of that region, we do feel like we're different here in Douglas County, and I've heard others say that, too. And our public health colleagues want to also get that much more drilled down data. So with, because we have their support and their interest, and that we won't be the first people doing this work, I feel like that's an early, again, not easy, but important, and I guess, quote unquote, low-hanging fruit. And then the other part of that is working with emergency management on all kinds of things. It's a very natural alignment with emergency management in our office. And through the development of this plan, those relationships have gotten stronger and stronger and stronger, including with Open Space Plan. There's been conversations together with emergency management on how we can work together with their department on protecting open spaces, too. So, yeah, that's another area that I would say is, we have listed as a long, or sorry, a short-term action, is to work with them. And that's with our, that could be something, starting with their community emergency response team work that they do, and preparing our community to deal with hazards, all the way up to working with them on doing an even more robust study and getting better data for our future hazard mitigation plan. And all of that can lead to further funding and assessing our assets and further protecting our assets here in the community. So again, not easy, but something that we've already started to lay the groundwork for and expect to be able to start on right away.
I can add a couple to that. On the immediate side, or the more tangible side, I think a robust weatherization program across the county, also a lot of work, but it has technical aspects, it, there are models out there, there are small programs, there are supports at the state level. So I think something like that could be an easy and impactful, sorry, I said easy, and initial and impactful step. On the less tangible side, more important, sorry, an important but kind of hard to get our hands around is methodology for ecosystem services and how to include natural services like flood protection, air quality, water quality, things like that, in decision-making that has measurable code-type things. So I think that that's an aspiration, I'm sorry, that is an aspiration, and I think that is going to be a hard one to get at, but we think we need to keep our eyes on it.
And just to follow up on that, as you describe that, it seems like there would be loss incurred sometimes when making some of those decisions. Like, we might have to do something differently in order to meet those goals, and in order to do something differently, that, especially if we're asking people to lose a convenience they have, or a certain amenity they have, that that might, that might be more difficult. Is that what you're anticipating?
I think figuring out the most relevant and appropriate formula for our community, but then, yes, there would be an adaptive component of a different way of decision-making or a different way of weighing decisions.
Thanks.
So some of the things in order to tackle the goals that are in the plan here would fall under county decisions or county policy. Some of those are kind of at the state level, so I'm thinking especially around renewable energy at the home level and at the community level, there's just so many constraints because of how the KCC and the state has set up regulations with utilities that make it expensive, make it not able to do, you know, full net metering, just make it harder on individuals to initiate that on their own homes, or for communities to decide to have renewable energy that they decide amongst themselves. Do we have, do we have the tools to work with? I mean, do we have the partners? Do we have the conversations to have that at the state level about how much our community and all communities need them to loosen the reins on some of those things? I mean, we have a lobbyist that works with the legislature. We don't really have someone that talks to the KCC. I'm not sure what the appropriate method would be.
Yeah, that's a really important part of this plan, and the Energy Section in particular. And I would say that we, with the adoption of this plan, that invites the conversation about what the county role could look like, and where those conversations are being had, because they're not in just one place, and who we could join forces with, and how and when and where to have a seat at the table, and again, further investigate what our role can be as a county.
Another one, I was curious in terms of, like, what partners do you foresee bringing together for the agriculture discussion? Whether that's in terms of biodiversity, I know there's a lot of work that can be done in terms of carbon sequestration and understanding what we're doing with carbon sequestration in grasslands. I know the plan talks about, you know, tree cover and tree canopy, but, you know, in our region, I mean, grasslands and soils really are a great carbon sink.
I have a couple answers. Yeah, I think, I briefly mentioned something about identifying appropriate performance indicators, and I think that carbon sequestration one is really key because you're right, we had a tool to measure tree coverage, but we know that there are other opportunities in our community, from grasslands to agricultural practices, and then some. So how to convene, you know, collect and convene all of those measures so they can become part of our data and part of our tracking. In terms of partners, I'll start with the Food Policy Council because they bring to the table multiple different voices, and they have been a feedback provider and an advisor as part of this process, as have other advisory boards, and, sorry, making up our advisory board, the Food Policy Council had a representative on that. So we have access to partners like the Farm Bureau and Conservation District and others built into that feedback loop. Through some of our investigation of some of the federal grant opportunities through, again, some of our kind of like on-the-ground, taking advantage of opportunities that are in front of us, we reached out to agricultural partners like NRCS to find out what they're doing in this space, more about what they're doing in this space, to find out that they're accessing federal grants for carbon reduction and ramping up programs in that area. So they were excited to hear about our plan, and so I think that there could be some future partnership and conversation there. Not think, I know, we're already planning on that. So I think, just, you know, just to agree with you, I think there are lots of partners in this space, and in our community, in our region, in our state, that will reach out to as the experts, and as the leaders in this area to help us convene data on what's already happening, because we know, it's not that it's not happening, it's that we don't necessarily have the data in this plan, and how can we support those efforts, or where they're desired or voluntary.
These are fairly new, and I've only been recently starting to hear about them in our community, but there are some programs that are offering, paying farmers for carbon credits based on renewable practices. And the one that I've been hearing about is through Ottawa Co-op, that might be worth reaching out to there. And I said, I think, I'm not sure how well-developed these programs are yet, I'm just digging in now to find out what are they measuring, how are they measuring that? Because they are paying farmers for practices they're either already doing or willing to adopt, of like, you know, no-till and cover crops and grazing, and some of those soil health practices that all of our agricultural partners tell us are helpful, but also that they can be expensive to implement if you haven't been there before. So that's just another tool to kind of look into and see if that helps to get us to a piece of the puzzle that we haven't had.
Yeah, thank you for that, because it was something, I was at a conference recently in Indianapolis, and that was something that everyone was talking about, was not just paying farmers, but also those that are keeping land and conservation. So, yeah, really big opportunity to look into.
Commissioner, do you have other questions?
I don't have any other questions.
I think I've gotten through most of my questions also.
Just appreciate all the time you spent on the report. Really, like I said earlier, I think it was a pretty robust process, and we appreciate the updates that you've been providing to us on a regular basis.
I think this is going to be a critical tool for our community to keep talking about, to keep bringing these issues in front of us, and to give us kind of ways to evaluate, projects that come before us, are these moving us towards our adaptation mitigation goals? I love the conversations with emergency management. I think those are key. I think we've been, there's just a lot to explore there, that maybe emergency management is already aware of and knowing, but it's, you know, getting that information out to other partners that also need that for their own planning purposes. I think that the county is a good place to be convening that conversation. So thank you. Thank you for the work, and we will get to talk about this also in terms of our regular agenda item. But with that, if we don't have any further questions here, Commissioner?
Nope.
And we don't have Commissioner Reed with us, she will be remote for our business meeting. But with that, we are recessed until our 5:30 business meeting. So thank you all for being here.